Ready? You're doing.
I'm a Russian agent to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it spans one nation under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
My next item is uh. Community participation and I would like to uh. Just jump in front of the line uh to recognize several people's um. One of them is uh, we lost the kind of lady or whatever. Um, this uh Kim Masatani who passed. And condolences to her and to the family and then uh in Ventura County, there was a common mayor, she was a county supervisor who was killed in a. In a automobile, well, she killed in the crosswalk. Dispatch Friday, so condolences to her. She was she was the chair of the water education for Latino leaders, so condolences to their family. So I have several requests to speak. Let's see item four. If you uh if you have a request to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. Look back. Item two four. Uh Marlene, are you are here to speak on item four?
Yeah.
You are? Very, okay, force you on item four. Jeanie Mello, are you on? You have a check mark. Is it on item four?
Yeah.
Four, okay.
I think they're all work.
So, yeah, I want to be sure. Uh, Mr. Svedra. Lee, Mr. Svedra, item four. Uh, Beak, I don't know, I don't know. I should ask if anybody is not. All right. Let's get on with the regular business. So the subject of reconsideration, second. Commercial cannabis business, CCB business permit application, sorry, retail.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Council and public staff. Um, I'm not going to read through this entire staff report. I'm just going to mention that we've got two presenters tonight. That will present um element seven and the risk dispensary in that order.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, go ahead.
Has there been any correspondence either via email, written or phone that need to be part of this agenda?
Oh, yes, your city attorney on that.
Oh, okay. Um.
Yes, we've. We we received an email uh from Princess Romero um that requested that the. Reference me tonight, I believe that was the only. The other one I determined was this one. Yeah, I mean, you can make it a part of the record, but it's just about um. It was not about this. It was about uh the other, the first selected applicant, but it doesn't mention this.
So that's part of the minutes.
Oh, you wanted incorporated. All right, it's an email from.
We don't have to read it.
No, no, I was just going to identify it. It wasn't posted on the website. We'll have to post on the website tomorrow. Uh, it's from Lanny Evanstein.
Okay. All right, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, thanks, yes, on those two items and then um so really we have two applications. We've had a series of presentations and meetings. And the council was able to narrow the selection down to two of the remaining four applicants. Um, and the the presenters tonight are element seven and risk dispensary. And I think their main focus is from the last uh council uh direction was to focus on community benefit, neighborhood plan portions of their applications. So tonight um um you will uh listen to the presentations. Um, and some of the recommendations by staff is receive presentation from element seven and it's dispensary, receive public comment. And then select one of these applicants to move forward with the process of obtaining a CB CCB permit or. Continue deliberations on these two CCB permit applications to a future meeting or take no action, provide further direction to SAP. And just keep it very simple.
Okay, I just uh wanted to refer everybody to your report. On the background and on the second page two of two. Because you mentioned that community benefit, the second paragraph. In the middle of the paragraph, it says uh. Look, let's see, maybe the whole thing, the council also directed staff to invite element seven. And the roots dispensary to make another presentation to the city council. With all five members in attendance, but that did not eliminate only the community benefit neighborhood plan portions of the application, so. Just to make sure that we're looking at the whole thing again.
Okay, yeah.
With uh significant input regarding community benefit, neighborhood plans.
I see you all emphasizing more on that.
Yeah, because there's a lot to it.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good point.
All right, uh element seven. Representatives. You know. Maybe not that. See. There you go. You can go.
Describe, describe them right there.
Good to see you again.
Yes, good to see you too. Thank you very much. Oh, good evening, uh honorable mayor, council members, city staff, uh members of the public.
Not working.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. It's.
Just go.
Yeah, you gotta almost eat it.
Yeah.
A good evening.
Good evening.
City staff, uh community residents of Guadalupe.
Sounds like it's Miss Frye.
Yeah. You have to be right in there. Those those work better.
Batteries.
There you go.
Thanks, Jake. Thank you, sir. Third round. Uh, honorable mayor, uh council, city staff, residents of Guadalupe, my name is George Black from element seven. Uh, team tonight to present essentially our application for the emphasis on community benefit and neighborhood planning to us for. Uh, I've got four other people up here with me. Um, I'm just going to introduce themselves about thirty twenty to thirty seconds each. Uh, first one being Ashley Roja, who's our head of government affairs. Uh, Lupe Alvarez, uh who obviously is our local partner that most people know very well. Uh, Robert DeVito, uh he's our founder and CEO, and Great Marina, who uh runs our community affairs. So, Ashley.
Well, I suppose, uh hello, good evening. My name is Ashley Pita Rojas. I am uh with element seven doing government affairs. And a little background, I'm working cannabis and since San Francisco went legal ahead of the state and called shape the way fuck before came to be. I'm ensuring that communities rather than center of the benefit, uh because cannabis is a generative industry and wanted to benefit communities most and I'm I'm here to support. Uh, element seven and I.
Excellent.
Well, actually, what she forgot to say is today is her birthday, so happy birthday. Yeah, so my name is Lupe Alvarez, um local resident, local business person, um. Ex volunteer where I can and help out where I can. And I'm going to save a little bit more for later and so pass it up.
I'm Robert DeVito, I'm founder, CEO of element seven. Uh, my background is education. Uh, from charter school, so when I got involved in this in two thousand sixteen, I tried to apply those elements into element seven and uh carry on throughout, so looking forward to it.
Great Moreno, uh retired Marine. And I do our community development work. Some of you guys see me around the community already doing some work out in the field uh. And with at Green Bank, uh my goal is to bring nonprofits to work together and help build teams. Uh, we've done a little bit of that with Tom here recently. And on a bigger note, I recently put a deposit on a house. Here in Guadalupe, I used to live here in the past or or Santa Maria actually. And uh my wife and I decided to come back here and rebuild the entire year in Buddy Grits.
And uh Josh Black, I had up our operations and marketing, um previously was head of marketing for Gatorade uh in ancient Pacific. Um, so what I want to do is spend about fifteen minutes thinking through our slides. Um, as you can see up here, this is one of our stores up in Marina, uh about two and a half hours north of here. Um, what I'm going to go through tonight is uh essentially. All these areas is the aim of mine areas there, from business plan through the community benefits, uh safety, security, uh and location. So specifically looking at business plan, uh we put a fairly lengthy plan together to essentially establish a policy wellness cannabis dispensary. In Guadalupe, the focus on medical patients, uh city product. And and other forms of policy therapies. Uh, as you can see on the bottom there, uh essentially there's four key areas uh. To our to our dispensary, you've got the policy wellness lab, as I said, a focus on uh medical products, um. CBD uh treatments for elderly people that work in fields. Uh, we've added up the interactive learning center, um where people can learn about the products a lot more. They can use RFID technology to essentially get the benefits of the products up on the screen. Um, the third part is we are vertically integrated company. We have a cultivation in San Luis Obispo County and. A manufacturing distribution facility over in Fireball in Fresno. Uh, and then uh we currently operate ten dispensaries across California. Um, the last part is obviously we're looking to do a delivery service, um largely because a lot of older people in this community. That may not feel comfortable going into the dispensary, but also might have mobility issues and and want to get those services home. The uh location uh above is obviously well known as well from the sport bar. Um, on on in the in the center of Guadalupe, uh Lupe actually owns that property. Uh, so no issues um with with site control and all that sort of stuff. Um, it's a turnkey site. It could be operational as early as um Q one, twenty twenty three. Um, we actually uh. Three or four months ago, as we went through the sort of phase two of this, um. We then handed in full uh construction plans and drawings in four weeks. Um, and we could hand those. Uh, back in again tomorrow if we were fortunate enough to be selected tonight. Um, but essentially we're looking to get this operation as quickly as possible, generate health and access to the city, and as I said. Uh, full of the plans and have everything um done for this within about four weeks of. Um, we've had a lot of discussions as well with local partners and we think this is part of our community benefit plan. Companies like Grayson Fox, uh Guadalupe Hardware and Techno Electric, all uh friends and and the family of of Lupe essentially. Um, these are the companies we're looking to work with um in the local community. Um. We have a general contractor essentially within house uh within our business that does a lot of our construction work. As well as our local voltage guy, so uh now we're ready to go, um ready to get operational and uh and start generating those for Joe. Um, we believe that we could generate um one point three million dollars in taxes over five years. Um, we think the the growth sale projections are are conservatively realistic. I hate putting out projections. That say, you know, we're going to do twenty million dollars in year one because, you know, we go around businesses. And we know that that's not possible. There's there's challenges to scale our business. To build it up and to to deal with, you know, the day to day challenges of running that business. So we've got. You know, a business that will be around four million dollars in year one, scaling up to almost nine in year five. Um, and you can see there that uh we've allocated four percent of gross receipts uh to the city benefit thing. Um, which would uh which would obviously, there is no tax at the moment, so that's what we've committed. Um, sorry, Mr. Technology, do you mind just slowing it a bit? Sorry about that.
Um.
As a business, we attract what we call a quite a broad customer base. Um, so we're not all about twenty one to twenty eight year old, you know, male and female customers coming in and getting high. Forty three percent of our customers are over the age of forty. We attract a very broad base, largely because of how we communicate to our customers, how we treat them. But also the products we deliver, the way we design our store. So about forty three percent of our customers are forty plus. Um, so it's 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 the people in this room that typically walk into our stores. As opposed to to the younger kids that are looking for, you know, a high. Um, you can see here that um we have a pretty broad base of customers. You know, fifteen percent of sixty plus, we really cater to to that audience. So, you know, a very diverse audience that we go after. Compliance sits at the heart of our operations. We do have a full time compliance officer, Andrew Norwood, uh that's in our business. She comes into our stores and that will order the orders before the department of cannabis control turn up. Before the uh chief of police turns up and and spots an issue. We want to order it ourselves. And we want to be compliant before it becomes an issue. Um. We just had the DCC into our facility in Fireball about two weeks ago, uh past the flying colors. Um, and and we think compliance is really important to us because we're in a business that frankly. Will become more compliant in the future as, you know, pharmaceutical companies and whatnot want to get involved, they will drive compliance. So we're trying to stay ahead of the curve there and make sure that, you know, we're really taking care of ourselves before it becomes an issue. Um, we we do believe our labor plans really are part of our community benefit. We offer uh living wages starting at twenty one dollars an hour. We have matching four away four O one K contributions to managers and executives. Stock option plans, again, for people that have been in the company more than four months, uh health and dental, um. Continuous learning is important, so um if someone sits within our business and wants to get paid more. We encourage them to go out and get training, learn more about the business, uh upsteal their skills and and then we obviously match it with higher income. Um, we do promote heavily within um most of our. Most of our general managers across our ten stores today uh have been promoted from within. Um, they started as shift leads. Uh, we have one lady over in uh in Mindota that was a shift lead in Marina. And she relocated Mendota closer to where she grew up, so she became general manager as well. Really, we really like that. Um. Because, uh, you know, we think it's uh, there's a lot of benefits to that, people bring stuff and then they take them with them as well. All of our staff go through very extensive training programs before they get on the floor, uh typically about eighty hours. And that consists of both classroom based training as well as training in the store. So uh the shift lead and the general manager for this store would probably spend either two weeks up in Marina or two weeks down in Port One Uni. Uh, training in that store, learning our system, learning our policies, seeing how we do things, so that when they come back here, it's not a problem. Uh, we also want to have a goal of uh hiring a hundred percent of our staff locally. Um, that. You know, obviously preference would be given to Guadalupe. We'd have to get a few from Santa Maria. Um, that's okay as well, but ideally. We would have a preference to locals um in this community. Um, and then we have the partnership with the cannabis, cannabis science, which is a uh learning institute. We also support. Patina's Cannabis, Forty Times, which is a social equity brand, and have a labor peace agreement with UFC Academy. Um, we, you know, we really do believe about having diversity, um and inclusion in our business. Um, you know, I was very fortunate to work in corporate many years, uh big companies, um. And they really sort of, you know, throw upon the benefits that I saw at firsthand, working with very diverse communities. Um, it builds talent, it builds uh innovation, uh and frankly, the cannabis industry needs to be more representative of the streaming of a consumer base. Um, and and we are very focused on on doing that. Sorry, Mr. Tech. Um, from a safety point of view, I just want to put this up real quick, um so that you can see some of the things we do. We have uh fire alarms in our buildings, uh burglar alarms, all doors have uh a key access, a vault system, so that you have to. Um, get that button. Not everyone is approved, going to every, open every room. Um. We have full fire and safety plans, exit signs, um a sprinkler where we need them. At night, we uh we roll down those shutters, which essentially seals off the building. All the walls have steel line plates in them and. You know, we're very, very focused on um on not having that issue and touch wood, we never had in any of our stores. Um, despite going through some, you know, fairly harrowing times over the last three years. Um, all of our, all of our stores also have a dedicated data room, so that all of the key systems, processors. Camera access, uh door access systems, uh box security alarm, whatever it is, it's kept in that one room. Uh, obviously, um for safety and and protection and um uh reducing issues and stuff. Um, we have a full incident reporting process as well, so if there is an incident, uh we can report that to both the state and the city over by. Looking at security, um if you're familiar with the building, you know, you've got that awning area outside with the gate. We will keep the gates. That we obviously, um, we think it's an extra layer of security. Uh, it reduces incidences of homelessness and 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 that sort of stuff. Um, so we very, you know, we want to keep it current design. We uh will have a secure checking area where people can come in, uh check their IDs. There's a barrier essentially created between the street and the store by having that secure area so that kids can't wander in and sort of. You know, light up their eyes. We like to have a barrier between the store and the and the street uh to reduce those issues. Um, which essentially creates a kind of a man trap law. Um. We have uh cameras in every corner, on these four K cameras, um both on the interior and exterior. Uh, as I said, all the rooms are secure and uh the vault is lined with steel plates. Um, we have a door access system, security shutters, um all dark background checks. Uh, it's a great requirement for by standard will be as well. Um, but we, you know, very focused on security given the nature of the business. Um, I've got about two or three minutes left. Quickly going through qualifications. Um, since we met last time, we actually opened up three new stores, one in Chula, this uh another one in Mindota, and then one up in Willets. Uh, today, we are the uh poorest footprint of stores across California, um from north to south. And so the children's are right down uh in San Diego County, about three miles from uh border. Uh, right up to uh Rio de del in northern, uh southern Humboldt. Um, we are uh under construction on that facility in present city as well, which is. Pretty much uh almost on the border of Oregon, so very broad footprint. Um, have obviously that cultivation facility. Manufacturing, distribution, um and and the, you know, stuff under under construction today. Just a quick uh overview of some of the facilities. We've got the South San Francisco delivery facility up there, which is one of the first we opened. Marina, Rio de del, uh Port One Uni, um. Mendota, as you can see there, we put up a beautiful mural about sort of really, you know, embracing the local community where it makes sense. Um, to do for Brad in our latest store that opened about six weeks ago and two of this stuff, uh which is doing great numbers for us. Um, and then you can see some of our facilities, CD, manufacturing, distribution, and that is part of the units. All these are operations today. You can walk in them and buy products. Um. Looking at our team, uh everyone's already introduced themselves. There's a couple of people that aren't here tonight, Sheila, Nick, uh Amber. Uh, I think you met Anna before as well. Uh, they all have different roles within the company, mostly uh cross operations. Uh, we have a pretty. Today, uh given the nature of our business and and the scale, we really. Um, looking at uh to sort of community benefits, um we we first actually came to Guadalupe in two thousand and eighteen, we dropped off a packet, an education packet to the planning department. Um, essentially trying to lobby for cannabis, uh so then partnered up with with Lupe a couple of years later. As we found the location in Guadalupe, all those little blue dots on that lower thing um are essentially places where we got letters of support. Um, so we've engaged our neighbors, we've talked to them, we've addressed their concerns, and we gave them that educational packet. Uh, Greg did most of that walking. Um, and uh and that was, yeah, didn't lose too much weight, Phil. From a neighborhood compatibility point of view, um we we do have a good neighbor policy, um which essentially means we have a dedicated. Uh, a full time community benefits manager, which is Greg, uh which is by our annual outreach events, uh quarterly city reports. Uh, we have an email uh address that people can address their concerns to us. We also have a one hundred point vendor management program so that uh we're essentially keeping our vendors and partners and brands accountable. To their communities before they come into this one. So, you know, if there's a, if there's a farmer in northern Humboldt that's doing runoff with water into the local creek. They're probably not going to pass out compliance check and they won't come on the shelf. Um, it was not just about taking anything on, it's about taking sustainable. You know, good brands that uh that that do good in their community as well. Um. Also then have a a full risk mitigation policy. Um, that means anything to do with emergency, we have a twenty four hour resolution program. Um, online tracking programs to track the response kind of that stuff. Um. Full open door policy with with law enforcement. If you were to call. You know, uh Chief Selena's in Port One Uni, or the uh chief of police up in Marina. I'll hopefully tell you that we have a very good relationship with them. They can come in anytime they want. Um. They do a lot of their training with us. Uh, they inspect our facility whenever there's a new recruit, a new officer. We're very. Very open with with law enforcement, if, you know, frankly, we've got nothing to hide. Um. We have noise and lighting management plans and what that means is uh we, you know, given our audience, we're older, a little bit more conservative. We're not blaring music out of that, so that we do have music in there, but you know, it's kept at moderate levels. Um, we make sure that we manage traffic, traffic and parking. The facility uh that we've identified um at eight fifty nine. Has significant parking at the rear, um as well as parking on the side and at the front on the street as well. Uh, we obviously encourage. Many people to park off the street as possible to reduce traffic. Uh, we do have a full odor control program in place, which means we put carbon scrubbers and air filters into the facility. Uh, where we can, we uh we integrate CD and stuff, which is essentially, you know, uh safety equipment in the design of the building itself. Um, and then obviously a full waste management reduction plan. Uh, and and waste in our business is not just cannabis, it's also. Plastics and cardboard and that stuff. We we want to make sure that we're not just throwing in the general trash. Uh, the cannabis waste is fairly minimal in our business. We took it in from package. Um. You know, we probably go through it within maybe over six months. And when I say it's in, it's, you know, aside of, you know, a nice chest kind of gem. Uh, and the reason it's often minimal is we only have about four in skew in our facility. Um, and a skew is a product. Most other stores have about eight and nine hundred. We keep it fairly lean because we're a curated dispensary. We can spend a lot of time making sure that the stuff on the shelves and stuff that people are going to buy. Um, odor management, as I said, we have this filtration system. We have a uh an outdoor sort of nade door we crack on it, so we can sniff the air and see if there's a problem. And then, you know, within the store itself, we have a lot of plants and greenery which sorts out those odors as well. Community benefits, uh we we've done a lot in the community, in different communities across California. At the top, we've got um some gang and gun violence clinics. We ran in uh Fresno, we bought rival gangs together and then from that parks, which uh which was interesting, but very beneficial and. Uh, to the community. Uh, down the bottom end, we've done ex fangment clinics. Uh, we ran our first ex fangment clinic in Fresno in two thousand and nineteen with the district attorney. Uh, and it's launched over two hundred records in a single day. Um, we've worked within the year and with nursing animals. Uh, we have a proven track record in in Guadalupe with with Lupe himself. Uh. Obviously, many of you know him, he's worked across many big organizations and supported him, whether it's the boys and girls, the bulldogs. Um, for the veterans or the and vets, um Lupe uh certainly has viewed uh his influence and sent him down a personal mine to do that. Um, some of the stuff we're looking at doing here in this community specifically, um some of these people maybe here tonight, but. You know, Greg's already been very active with the bulldogs. Uh, we're helping them get their field ready for the season, um turning over the soil, um helping to get the grass and turf. Uh, Nick and his sons are very big football fans and and pro football players, uh so we feel great about that. Uh, amigos, Los Amigos de Guadalupe, it's another organization, uh the Vietnam veterans. Um, this is another one that we've we've actively engaged with and and trust for. Uh, and then the key, the key thing to our community engagement program is making sure that we're accountable. To the promises we make, and that's why we have that community advisory board. We want people from the audience tonight to sit on that board. And look, you know, rub it in the eye and say, you know, you said we put forth some new prospects towards the local community. That's super mine. Um, and and make sure that it's getting directly to the right places. Uh, and just recently, actually last weekend, we ran SC thirty four veteran programs in Marina and Port One Uni. Where veterans would come in and get free uh many cannabis, uh because they couldn't afford it, and we we saw about eighty people every day. Uh, this is my last slide, uh the location. I just wanted to sort of finish on this, uh and make sure everyone knew. Where we're looking to go, uh the facility, that's the old sport bar, owned by Lupe, um eight fifty nine is the address. Uh, we think it's the turnkey facility, uh you know, it doesn't require a huge amount of construction internally. It's mostly uh, you know, framing walls, uh looking for wiring, uh we're not changing the plumbing. Uh, at all, the HVAC actually is in. The HVAC actually is in breakage, which no one, probably approved about two months ago, looking at that and, uh, we've already spent a lot of money on that. So it's, it's a facility that we can just stay in preparation. So that's my last slide, I just want to give it to Lupe to finish off and, and give you some summary in a couple of minutes, thank you.
If, well, as you, as you all know, knowing, heard about here or whatever, I, I don't like speaking about myself. I served on the city council for two years. I was mayor for four terms, two-year terms, so ten years total that I gave back as the deputy as the elected official. I took it very seriously because what demands that respect? And we've been thrashed previously in newspapers for dumb stories that happened in other cities, but because we're a small city, we're on the northern section of Highway One and we get picked on by our newspapers and stuff. So I care about my community, I respect my community, I respect our residents. And I vetted these guys personally. I don't want to push things on my family, on myself or on the community. So I think this is the right company for Guadalupe. Um, they've got great partners that we're going to be partnering up here in town with that are great nonprofits. And they submitted plans, they submitted the check, it was returned and we can submit tomorrow again. And, um, with that, we've given them the decision of the council, I know it's a hard one, but I think you guys, hopefully we'll make the right decision at the end, so I'm hoping for that, thank you.
Does anyone of your, uh, partners want to say something? The roots will be given the same courtesy, so. Okay, it's up to you. Oh, well, what I want to kind of iterate it, if you're going to give me a couple, if you're going to give me a couple of minutes, it's, um, so in the last couple of years since I came back here, um, like I mentioned earlier, I used to live in San Maria, but I grew up out here working in fields. Without starting sniveling like I did the last time I talked about this, my brother and I learned how to work out if this is where we grew up to then. So when we joined the Corps, as I progressed in life and I came back here and I've seen this community, even though it hasn't grown much, it's grown on me probably more now so than it did way back in the day, you know? So two weeks ago, me and my, my wife had had a conversation, there was an opportunity after, after a meeting that I was at here, and there was an opportunity to purchase a, a home. And as you guys know, in that housing area, it's hard to find a home in there, in Guadalupe period, probably. And my whole intent from buying a home is I have four sons. Bring them back, show them what it's like to be raised in a small community and give back. Hopefully God's good willing, we get that field up and running, we do a lot of that support group stuff. Um, not just here, but hopefully in San Maria as well, right Stephen? Band of Brothers, we're, we're all over the place, so, you know, for me, it's about giving back. I'm at that point in my life where I'm ready to retire, I've done my thing and it's time to move on. But I got boys, young men that I got raised, and I'd like to see them come back here. And if I'm looking in the future, I, there's things that I feel like Guadalupe does not have that I can help support. A charter high school, that'd be great. We don't need our own high school, but we need a charter high school, we need some kind of high school. There's just a lot of ideas that I feel like I can help bring to this community because of the work that I've done throughout the state. And that's what I told my wife, let's go back and retire, let's give back. Let's put some of that work in that I couldn't when I was younger to help make me successful, if I can help other kids be successful. And at the end of the day, for me and my family, it's a blessing and an opportunity to come back here where my mom and my dad raised us to become the, the adults that we are today. I appreciate you guys' time, I'll let you guys.
Thank you, okay, anybody else?
Do it, Greg sounds actually worth it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Just loaded the roots. You did, good. Roots, you're on, thanks for being here.
Hi, everybody, thanks for having us back again, welcome. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Luis Estes, the head of Director of Retail Operations for the Roots Dispensary. I'm here tonight with Bethuna, Mustafa Walratis, Eddie Alperry, Joe Armandares. Together, we're the ownership and management team for the Roots Guadalupe. I would like to begin tonight's presentation by answering a question that was asked to all the applicants two months ago. The question was, what sets us apart from other applicants? I'd like to answer that now. First, the Roots is not interested in suing the city of Guadalupe. All we've ever asked for and ever wanted, equal opportunity, and thank you guys for allowing that. Second, the Roots will never mistake the city or light the city, either by omission or commission. I can personally attest to every word, sentence, statement and fact contained in our application is the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so we got it. Third, the Roots is looking for a long-term strategic partnership with the city of Guadalupe. The last thing we're interested in is starting out this relationship through deception or any other effort or attempt to be less than a hundred percent honest, transparent, and accountable. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, I sit here before you tonight. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, I sit here before you. I sit here before you tonight, Humpty, with the following pledge. When it comes to the, when it comes to the operational integrity and professional conduct of our company, we vow to do the right thing. I take full responsibility for every decision, every promise and every pledge and every commitment we made and will ever make to the city, our customers, employees and ultimately this community. We're proud of our reputation that we have built and established with cities where we do business. I invite everybody and encourage everybody to reach out to validate that same. The most valuable commodity we have as a company is our reputation. It's not our financial size, it's not how many lawyers and accounts we have, or how many other cannabis companies might be looking to dollar this up as part of a multi-million dollar acquisition. The most valuable commodity we have as a company is our reputation. Oh, sorry, just said that. So I got into this industry to remove the negative stigma associated with cannabis and create a future for my family. We want to help build a future for our employees where they get to do what they love. Our goal is to create a legacy that one day we can look back on with a sense of humility, pride and accomplishment. We are working to become the cannabis staple of the Central Coast. We would love to show that a rose grew from the concrete. People like us coming from underserved communities have so much potential, but sometimes lack the resource. We know what many people in Guadalupe feel like because we come from similar backgrounds. We believe in doing the right thing. The city of Guadalupe and the people who live here deserve to have a cannabis retail store that is committed to them for the long haul. By doing business with our company, your city will never need to apologize, explain or defend your decision towards our team and company. Hopefully, we'd be able to win the license, we will do the right thing. We, we're not here to embarrass you, we're here to be good partners. So in a fairly new industry that comes with many hurdles, we continue to advocate for equality. We represent our industry and communities with dignity and honor everywhere we go. Whether we're talking to elected officials or our neighbors, our purpose is the same. We want to offer equity sourced products to our community at affordable prices. We've been winning our communities over by being great operators and always putting their needs first. We're known as a cannabis company who is genuinely for the people. Keeping an open line of communication has been amazing when it comes to hearing what our neighbors want and need. We can always agree to disagree about cannabis, but one thing that is never debatable, the Roots is for our communities. We have and continue to work with both Port Juani and La Po to fine tune their cannabis programs. We make it a priority to keep our elected officials and city staff informed as to how our new industry is performing to ensure we are offering sustainable and competitive program in the cities we operate. As more locations are opening up and certain companies continue to expand, we have, we have established ourselves as a go-to company that offers best-of-class products, knowledgeable team members and excellent customer service. We have played a vital role in being able to generate business and pay our fair share of taxes when they were painfully needed, but we were also able to up with our surrounding businesses by collaborating and staying in tune with our communities. We understand this decision is tough, it's a very big decision, but you guys know that. Every time you guys make a decision up there, you're shaping the future of Guadalupe. Um, so we ask, what is the best fit for Guadalupe? Time after time, we see corporations, franchises come into small towns and top out within, within a few years. This causes location to stay, locations to stay empty on the strip that leads people to believe if Domino's can't make it here, how can we? It's discouraging. We believe we're the best choice because we're not applied by a company. We want to be here for the long run, we want to be committed to our communities and helping them grow. Bigger companies don't really engage with their customers or their community the way Guadalupe really needs it. We know this because we've seen other big corporations come into La Po, come into Port Juani and just don't make that connection. They've never had to, they're, they're saturated or I wouldn't say saturated, but they have a larger population to where it's not even. All right, so. Uh, our location, our location is eight thirteen Guadalupe Street. It has recently been updated and will allow us to get through the permitting process without difficulty. As a parking lot and building is already up to code, we can be operational quickly and start generating revenue for the city without any issues. So us coming into Guadalupe does not mean you're losing a business that will be relocating this current smoke shop down the street. Operations, in compliance with local and state code, we will operate between nine AM to nine PM Monday through Saturday and nine AM to six PM on Sundays. To run a smooth and efficient dispensary, we will implement standard operating procedures, which are called SOPs, which include all regulatory law and industry best practices. Our SOPs are the foundation of our operation plan and each employee is trained thoroughly on them. All of our shops have an outstanding compliance record and we intend to keep it that way. We also were just audited by the V C C a couple of weeks ago, everything went great. Through the use of on-site security and thoroughly trained staff, we ensure that no person under the age of twenty-one or eighteen with a medical recommendation enters our property at any time. We conduct regular inventory audits utilizing trees, our point-of-sale system, and metric, the state strike and chase system that ensures each and every product is accounted for, which reduces the rest of theft or diversion. We also offer delivery to our customers and we will offer this service to residents of Guadalupe and their green cities as well. Oh, sorry. Our employment and labor plan. Our number one resource we can provide in Guadalupe is employment opportunities for local residents. Our labor plan includes initial hiring of twelve local residents, scale to twenty-two by the end of our first year of operations. To ensure that a hundred percent of our employees are sourced locally, we will work directly with organizations like the San Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce and Hispanic Serving Institution. Also, we will advertise open positions with America's Job Center of California, Santa Barbara County Workforce Development and Tri-County Lab. We will advertise all positions in both English and Spanish to ensure we reach a large audience and cater to our community. Our starting wage is twenty-two fifty per hour and exceeds both the living and minimum wage for the area. We offer a full benefits package including health, vision, dental, life insurance, paid time off, as well as several forms of continuing education. Our hiring practices are friendly and never intimidating. Hiring local gives some money in our community to be reinvested in our community. Our neighborhood compatibility plan. So through experience, we understand the importance of implementing a well-thought-out neighborhood compatibility plan. Our compatibility plans have had zero complaint, excuse me. Our plans have had zero complaints from any of our neighbors at all of our locations. Those plans include creating the business, business-to-business partnerships with our neighbors to drive the economy, designating a community relations contact to handle community concerns, proactively and consistently engaging our neighbors and maintain sharp communication with, with the city. Our plans are, consist of three major components. That's compliant management, management of the business and odor waste mitigation. Our odor and waste mitigation plans. Describing our application, they have been effective in every city we've gone to. Products sold in our stores arrive in sealed, airtight packaging, so very little, if any, odor is ever emitted. Nonetheless, we utilize both carbon filters, order serving units and an H-track system to properly circulate air and continue eliminating orders. We partnered with Diakka for our waste management, a fully compliant cannabis waste management company. So regarding safety, both safety and security are the foundation of our operations plan. We enlisted Jeff Holdings, a professional fire prevention and suppression consultant, from C F P Engineering to devise a plan, to devise a plan that will ensure safe and compliant operations on site. Included in our application, we provide both a site full plan and indicating location of fire extinguishers, fire alarm controls, pool stations, exit signs and first aid kits. Employees are trained on specific accident and incident reported procedures, which comply one hundred percent with OSHA guidance. Security, very, very important. So regarding security, we engaged Terry Blavins of Armoflex. Terry has over thirty-five years of law enforcement and security experience and they reviewed our property and company policies when it came to security. Our client is tailored to focus to the cannabis industry and our detailed training we can provide to our employees to reduce the risk of a security breach. I'd like to add, we have never had a security breach at any of our current operating locations. Our security plan includes a combination of employee training on specific procedures and actual security equipment from our customer verification process to maintaining our camera and alarm systems. Our plan is comprehensive and proven to be effective. Our facility's, uh, security devices include surveillance cameras on both the interior and exterior, alarm systems, motion sensors and panel. So now getting to what we're really known for, and this is all the fun part that we love to do. Our community benefits and investment plan. We are a community-focused cannabis business proven, proven and a robust and thoughtful community benefits plan, which is led by our social impact committee. Our committee includes local residents, Seren Fodible and Karen Evangelista, the start, and we will continue to add members as we approach our grand opening. We are prepared to donate up to six percent of our gross revenues to funding our plan. After reviewing the city's draft general plan released in August of two thousand and twenty-one, the, and the community matrix info, we identified the following areas as those where we would like to focus our giving. Youth, economic realization, public services and facilities and community engagement. Our community contributions include financial contributions, volunteer hours and in-kind donation. So continuing, we intend to make financial contributions to organizations like the Guadalupe Police Explorers Program, the cultural arts and education center and Allen Hancock Promise Program, just to name a few. We encourage our team to contribute volunteer hours. We provide paid time off for the team members to volunteer within the community and we encourage our team members to volunteer and support organizations like Little House by the Park. In addition, we will operate in-kind donation direct selling the store throughout the year to collect tangible goods, which will be donated to organizations like the Guadalupe French Library, local animal shelters and organizations supporting women, children and the unhoused. We are proud members of the Guadalupe Business Association and Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce and intend to support the endeavors of both of these organizations. Through our membership in these organizations, we can also ensure local employment opportunities and the development of a strong business-to-business program with neighboring businesses. Since two thousand and eighteen, our team has donated over two hundred thousand to local charitable organizations and cities where we operate our retail store and we look forward to doing the same in Guadalupe. I'd like to hand over the microphone to Joe, he's going to add a little bit more about our community investment plan.
Thank you, Louis. Um, how much time do we have, Merritt?
Much as you want.
Okay, well, that's a, I'm a, I'm a politician. You want to be careful when you talk politician, he has all the time he wants. Uh, Louis and I, to be honest, Louis, we actually had a kind of a disagreement about our presentation tonight. I suggested that we just scrap it all and tell you what we know you already know. Then that is that our. Then that is that our best management practices, our community benefit, our site security plan, our neighborhood compatibility. You already know that we are a qualified, effective operator as our E-seven. That's why we're here tonight. Let's be honest with you about that. You know that we could do this because that's why we are here tonight. Tony Ramirez asked a good question two months ago, said to a part. Louis addressed some of that. One of the other things that he didn't mention tonight is where a woman-led company. So we're very proud of the fact that Beth Dunne, who's one of the owners of this company, is a leading champion and a leading entrepreneur in the cannabis space. I wanted to tell you something from, from my perspective, my unique perspective. Many of you know, I know all of you know, and I know the mayor knows, because we met a couple of years ago to discuss cannabis Guadalupe. And I was working with another company at the time. I had a situation about a year ago where unfortunately, somebody was finding themselves in a rather difficult position, and so I had to pivot out of that company. And it was very difficult for me because when I made the decision to work for that company, I walked away from everything I was involved in. And in fact, Mayor, Julie, you know that a few years ago, you and I met to talk about oil and gas issues in Santa Barbara County and the North County in particular, trying to empower Latino families. Give them the kind of job that could give them the kind of upward mobility that they're entitled to. When that situation occurred, I had to make a, I made a phone call to somebody in this industry who I respect, you know, everybody in the industry from one end of the state to the other. And I said, I need to find another company that I can work with. And I sure as heck don't want it to be the kind of company that I'm leaving. And he didn't hesitate. He didn't hesitate for a minute. He introduced me to Beth Dunne, Louis Castellana, and Marcus Dunne. He said, those are the companies, that's the company that you want to work with. They have integrity, they're ethical, they're driven, they're going places, and they would be lucky to have you and you would be lucky to have them. So I just want to go out and say as somebody who's been involved in business and industry and tax pay issues and academic issues, and the list goes on and on, Santa Barbara County, I have not met anybody that I respect more than Louis Castellana. He's extraordinarily good kid. I can call the kid, he's the same age as my son. There's not many benefits of getting older, but you know, that's one of the good things. So I just wanted to make it clear that in my view, based on my experience, based on my perspective, based on my knowledge and insight of this industry and other industries, I have not found anybody that I'm more impressed with than Louis Castellana. I want to speak real quickly and then I'll set up. With respect to the community benefits, and I want to address particularly compliment Ramirez because I know that he had asked the question a couple of months ago, or made a suggestion that we come back and we present community benefits. One of the things that we did between then and now, and we continue to do it, is we are building and forging a really strong strategic partnership with Hancock College. You know, we've all experienced over the last couple of years, the lockdowns and the COVID pandemic. Some, some people say that the next pandemic in the country, and indeed perhaps the world, won't be a virus per se, but it could be potentially an economic virus driven by the fact that we have a digital divide in this country. And that we could find ourselves in the future where we have an entire population that can't use computers, that can't read, that can't compete in a twenty-first century economy. So we feel really strongly, particularly in Guadalupe, which as we all know, socio-economically is the most challenged city in the county, that there cannot be, indeed there is not, a better investment that we could make than in our education community and our education infrastructure and sending high school kids to college and giving them that opportunity so they can have the mobility that they're entitled to as, as citizens and productive members of our society. So we're really excited about that. We continue to always evolve and we continue to always look around and figure out where can we be more impactful, and so we recently reached out and we're, and we're working with Steve Baird from Bannan Brothers. But it doesn't end there. We are committed, we are committed to supporting all of the veteran organizations that are supported by our competitors. Now, let me just finish by saying this. And Lupe and me and the five of you have something in common. We've all been on city council, present and past. There is not, in my view, one license that does progress tonight. Now I realize technically there is. But in reality, there is not. And I think you would know, you would agree that from the very beginning, from the very beginning, I have been making the recommendation to this council that they issue two licenses. One to Guadalupe, to Roots Guadalupe, and the other one to Element Seven. I continue to believe unequivocally that these are the two companies that deserve to do business in Guadalupe. And that if you issue licenses to these two companies, you will not be embarrassed, you will not be humiliated, you will not be embroiled in litigation and all these other problems that I think are coming down the pipe. And so I would strongly urge you with all due respect that you not consider this vote tonight about one or the other, that that it's about both. And I think if you do that, it'll be a win-win. Our company wins, Element Seven wins, the city, the city wins, the community wins. And so that would be my recommendation to you tonight. Thank you. Any questions?
Not yet.
Alright, that, that's what we have time for you guys. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Now we'll go to, very first to sweep on this item. The first is Steve Baird.
Can I stand out here, Mr. Mayor, anywhere you want, counsel? Uh, thank you for having me. I'm not a Guadalupe resident, but what I have to say I think is pretty valuable. I am, what I believe our organization is probably the only group that has had experience with all three of the groups that I know that have been involved with getting licensing. I founded and run the Bannan Brothers Veterans Organization in Santa Maria Orchid, Guadalupe. I work with veterans, law enforcement, and we respond when veteran crisis. I'm a very big advocate for what I've seen cannabis do in regards to veterans. The crisis calls I go on, they have nothing to do with, not a lot to do with cannabis, I'll be honest with you. I'm pulling guns out of people's hands when it's alcohol and heavy drug related, usually prescribed by the VA. So I'm about creating change in the future. I do agree, and I think what we saw here tonight, it embodies what I stand for in our organization, and it's about honor and it's about integrity. And it's about actually proving and doing what you say you're going to do. I am born and raised in Orchid. I did spend a lot of my life up north. But I came back home and that's where I started this organization, so. I do agree, if there's a possibility, I, I think that the two people that I know in my experience with them are in this room for those licenses. The one group that has already gotten a license, I'll tell you now, I personally deny the ten thousand dollar donation from that organization because something didn't smell right. And in the end, it wasn't right. And I'm glad that I didn't align with that. So, really, for this part, I was, I was contacted by somebody yesterday to say, hey, reach out to this group. So I'm, I'm doing this. I reached out to Roots and, okay, well, tell me what's going on, you know? And they told me what, what, what they're going on and what, what experience has happened here. And I said, well, who, you know, who are the benefactors? Because that's what it's all about. This community, it's about who's going to benefit the community and who in the community is going to benefit. And I'm one that believes that everybody should benefit. Elks Queen candidate, yeah, where I work with Kiwanis, but I think we should support all of them, to be honest with you. It's, this competition breeds a lot of angst and stuff in our communities and, and so I will say this much, I was not going to commit to any side, one or the other, because the one thing I will not do is go against another brother and veteran's organization, ever, to take funding from them, ever. First and foremost, and so as we reviewed this and we're walking through this, I said, okay, I, I, I see what's happening in Laoco. The Roots Dispensary is a proven entity down there. In fact, they're probably the number one, to be honest with you. I've done my research. When, when there is a license available in Orchid, I was approached by Element Seven, they have, they do have a great business plan. And they have a great show and, and, you know, I'll save that for the very end. But more importantly, before I align with anything, because I had no desire to do that. I have good friends out here that are part of this organization. So I said, if I'm even entertaining it, here's what I'm going to offer up. My offer is that you, you as Roots have to take every single group that, you know, that they're going to help out here in this community. And if you were going to donate money to Bannan Brothers and you want our community involvement, our money would go to these groups here. We don't want the money for this. Maybe I do future endeavors with Roots, I'm possibly, it looks like I am going to do that, to be honest with you. But anything that would have been allocated for any veterans outside of here would all be here. They're VDA's, that's where it needs to be. And then that's what Papa Bindo would want. And then that's the right thing to do in these communities. And I've seen it too many times where people will come in and they'll say they're going to do something. But I can tell you firsthand that those things don't get done. So when we talk about, you know, right seed, well, like I said, we'll see. The point is, is that yes, there are a lot of, there are ten dispensaries in California under a certain name. There's a lot of licenses under that certain name that are, that never really come to fruition, and that's my fear. That everything for this community is being stated and based upon the fact that it's all sales revenue and they get a percentage, right? But what happens if they never open that store? What happens in, in that community and all those promises were made never actually happened? And I, I'm, I'm here to tell you that, you know, not on my watch. I'll do the best I can. It's not my community. But I'm from Orchid and this, when I grew up, these two communities were connected. That's what I was taught. Thank you very much. I'm a strong supporter of what I see out of Roots so far. And why is because they did commit. They told me, yes, we will honor. Heard that. So no matter what tonight, you guys win. And that's what matters, coach. That's what matters. You guys all win tonight, no matter what.
Thank you. Next person, Marlene Stenoff.
First of all, don't start my. Our city attorney, we have city treasurer, we have chief of police, and we have the city councilman mayor. If you're coming to support your dispensary, check your clothes. Because I think it's disrespectful to smell like cannabis. Because these are people with.
Will you please, let's, let's come up here and, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Farina. And I heard both sides. First of all, Element Seven, they did a good, good sales pitch. What I disagree, I don't disagree, what it is with both businesses, you do need both businesses because one we all know that, everybody comes in, opens the business, what's going to, what's going to end up being? What the promises they made to contribute to police explorers, the children, to open up charter schools or high schools, get that in writing. Because there's always a lot of promise, a lot of promise. And they never follow. We all know that with the funding. You know, sometimes it has to be, you know, transfer over, but you can't re-line the decision with your emotion. Because someone said their family, they grew up here, they understand. Well, we all grew up here. We all, a lot of it came from the same background. So we know what you're saying, weeks. You know, not just promises. So if you base your decision on your dispensaries, do it on facts, not emotion.
Thank you, Marlene. Next person, Jeanne Mello.
Evening, council, Ms. Mayor. This is not a part of what I came here intending to say, it just was something, it just came into my head. The gentleman that spoke. What one is from the roots?
Which gentleman there's so.
From another dispenser?
Yeah. Joe?
The Roots. He commented that it was woman-led. And I really took exception to that, and I want to know in his mind what bearing that has on anything. And that was salted, that comment. So these are my notes. I've been at the meetings and I've listened to all the applicants at the dispensaries. This is what I have concluded. I don't know of any, I don't know any of the non-residential applicants. I don't know their business practices, their levels of honesty, their morals. For the people of Guadalupe, outside of the monetary gains, they will reap from our citizens. However, after living here for twenty years, I well know Lupe Alvarez and Gustavo Alvarez and their business practices, their levels of honesty, their morals, and their profound concern for the people of Guadalupe. These two men have provided Guadalupe with new growth, new housing, and improvement. Together with their untold personal time and sincere concern for the welfare of Guadalupe-based residents. They bring a strength of character to Guadalupe that no outsider could ever come close to bringing. The two of them will bring their strong business practices, their honesty and their morals to the dispensaries they each represent. It is for those reasons that I feel strongly that the council's vote should be for two of our own hometown men, Lupe and Gustavo Alvarez.
Thank you, Jeanne. Next person, Mr. John Sabater.
Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm John Sabater. They call me Judy and I was born and raised in this community. And I probably died in this community. Probably buried in this community. Anyway. I'm just here to say, you know, that I heard what Miss Mello said. Miss Mello, Mrs. Mello. Heard what she said, you know, but maybe, you know, I've known Lupe Alvarez a long time. I turned into a city council with him, he was mayor. And I also know Gustavo. And I find him to be very, very honest gentleman. And I also have gone on premise now that I think maybe the city should consider technically with both. Because I, I feel that both of them can, can help the city. The county, the, I'm sorry, the mayor, Julia, who I've known for a long time. You know, he said recently that the city should be up to ten thousand people. Then everybody start coming into this town, all the business. Thing that people look for in the city is public safety. You let the fire and police protect me in both of them. Now, you get both of these and coming in with these businesses, you'll get money for both of them. And the city needs that revenue right now to build up the city, to build up the public works, to build up the recreation, build up public safety. So I, now I'm going to the premise that we should, you should vote. Here I am, I should vote now. Okay, well, thanks you very much.
Thank you. Next, the individual, Mr. Pete Sabobian. Mr. Mayor, City Council?
I just, I just came to reiterate because I've known you've been listening before and through the process. And I know it's a hard decision for the city council to come to decision. But I speak not for myself, but for our chapter. Chapter Vietnam Veterans of America, here since two thousand and twelve, actually, twenty-seven, two oh seven, but we came back. Chapter Vietnam Veterans of America, here since twenty twelve, actually twenty seven, two oh seven, but we came back to twenty twelve. But we've been here, and what I believe should be doing, should be done, is for these companies to come and meet us. Come in, come into the area, check us out. I was never approached by anybody from Roots. I don't know any of them except for Gustavo, and I only know him because my brother used to go fencing for him. But but Element Seven now, they've come in and they've made themselves, even if they, they made themselves part of this community. They don't know yet that they're going to be accepted by the city council. They have no idea. But yet, they're here. They're in our baseball field. They come to our meetings. They introduce themselves. They try to find out what we want. They work at our food banks. So Roots was talking about community and all that, so that's, I guess, doesn't start to, after they get their application, I'm not sure. I'm just saying, this is just me talking as far as our chapter is concerned, because we talk in our chapter about it, and we don't, I've talked to everybody in my chapter that comes to our meetings, and nobody's really heard of Roots. They haven't been approached by Roots. So Roots went out, they did the Doom Center, they did the Cultural Center, you know, the Kiwanis. I guess they thought they were very important to do that, and they did it. They didn't come to the veterans. And veterans now, you know, we're we're kind of getting to the scope now where through the VA, they are going to start prescribing medical marijuana before long. And the discounts that are given generally by these companies. There's, there's something about our veterans at at my age and older that they seem to not want to come into the stores. And that's why I like the idea of the delivery. Because there's some of our veterans who, even though they're sick with cancer and other things that they have, which medical marijuana is so helpful for. I've been exposed to that side of the the house. I I was an AIDS advocate for one for many years. And back then, in those years, the only thing that was helping those people with AIDS through their pain was medical marijuana. And we have, I have many friends now, veterans, that are kind of dealing with the same thing. So I take it personal. Element Seven, Greg is a Marine, I'm Army, it doesn't matter, we're veterans. And I appreciate the fact that when he came to us, he sought us out. They they may have sought out the other companies as well, but they included us. And so our chapter, we still are we want our, our I guess I must stop with the word, our support to Element Seven. And that's only because of the, of the feeling that we got with them. It's a gut feeling, that's all. And sometimes that's how we have to go by. Both the presentations were just amazing. I mean, I I agree, they they both were. The city council already made the decision to have two dispensaries. Because at one time there was five or seven, they're top. Yes, we may get up to ten thousand, and maybe then we can bring in another dispensary. But I think, I think it was spoken that, yes, sometimes they don't make it, but I believe both of these companies, the one that's already here and the one that's being applied for, which in our opinion would be Element Seven, I think that they'll make it. We have, we have San Maria, we have working, we have, we have a lot of, we have a lot of customers that are gonna be available to us. So anyway, I think that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Mr. Enrique Ortiz.
Mayor. I find it hard to come here all the time, but I found it very important to come. I'd rather be at the Pope off the hill with the kids, but like I said, it's very important to be here. And I've been working with Lupe since our reception of our of our league at two thousand and five. So I've seen what he's done. And I I I trust him. And before even Element Seven even came into the picture of all these dispensaries, he was always there for us, not just for us, but the community itself. And I just seen throughout the years. And I really tried to recruit them, and Element Seven, Greg Moreno, he, he called me up, said, hey, what do you guys need? How's how's the bill looking? I'll be out there this weekend, you know? There's times I don't even have him out, but he's out there. I'm not helping out or not. So I truly believe that they are, they truly are gonna help this community out. And and I know you have a tough decision to make, but I definitely support Element Seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would like to, please come?
Good, good evening, I guess. You know, thank you, first and foremost, council, mayor. I know it's very, very, very grueling process. It has been a difficult decision at hand. You know, I for one, definitely representative of the Roots, deal with operations. First and foremost, you know, again, would like to apologize. We definitely, as a community benefits, we try to hit every aspect of the community. You know, working in underserved communities, there's there's so many needs, right? As as you guys know, working in government, and that's my background. It's almost impossible to to just help every single person, every single organization, and we have to allocate the re you know, that, that we know we can make a difference or make a change, not to say that we can't, but it's just a, it's just getting aligned and then working with everybody in the meantime. And we're definitely open to working with everyone. That's just, just so many things that we face. You know, first and foremost, again, you know, thank you. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't something that we didn't believe in, in the community, being, you know, San Maria resident, being a a local resident my whole life. You know, playing football, doing all the things that we do here. And we know that kind of is good for the community because of all the benefits that it brings economically. And, you know, we just wanna make sure that you guys know that the Roots, that we're here to stay, that we're here to be part of the community. You know, I know this has became vital about, you know, Lupe more so than than Element Seven of Roots. And I wanna throw that out there, that, you know, Lupe has a spot with the roots regardless. Lupe's organization has a spot with the roots regardless. We're still gonna be here, you know, we're still going after licenses in San Maria, that's what was, this is all we can. You know, and there's definitely promises made all the time. With Roots on the ground, you know, we don't have multimillion dollar finances, but I can guarantee you that we're here to stay, here to revitalize our communities. Element Seven has a license in La Hope, had a license in La Hope, been had license in La Hope. They don't open it. It doesn't make economic sense for them, right? That's flat out the only reason. We stand by what we, what we do, we stand by what we say we're gonna do. And we guarantee we're here for the long run. We're here to work with with the community. We're here to work with with the government to make sure that all of our promises.